We just wrapped up a joint session with the Finance Committee to discuss Selectman's financial policies, followed by an executive session where we discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. We now will begin regular session with a 7 o'clock announcement and review agenda, which I'm doing. Public comment period will be not at 7:05 because we have a public hearing at 7:15, and it is that time. It'll be immediately thereafter, followed by the Town Managers' Report where we'll do the Selectman's Agenda schedule, receive an update from the Town Manager on issues surrounding the FY -- sorry, the 2017 Fall Town Meeting warrant, determine whether or not to recommend the use of free cash to offset the FY18 tax rate, consider taking positions on the various warrant articles, and consider adopting policies on accepting articles from the Regional School Committee. The public hearing for adopting the layout of Chamberlain Mills Lane will be at 7:15, which is momentarily followed by other business, Selectman Liaison reports in minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting of September 17, 2017, under announcements this Thursday night. Well, first of all, Groton Fest occurred on Saturday, and it was a beautiful day, well-attended, excellent event, so thanks to Jane Bouvier and all the volunteers for sponsoring that. In addition, the Pages for Peace Foundation and the Sawyer Family invite you to the annual Betsy Sawyer Day of International Peace, which will be this Thursday night, September 28th, at the Bull Run Restaurant, 6:00 PM in Shirley, Massachusetts. It is a $40 per person event where you get a meal, has a cash bar, there's auctions, and you get to listen to a very interesting guest speaker named Louis Rhonda, who basically started the Peace Abbey, which is a foundation which was begun in 1986. He will be the guest speaker. If you're interested in attending, it's a great event for a great person who unfortunately is no longer with us, who really inspired a lot of children within Groton and Dunstable and taught them about how to understand peace and how to exude peace and teach peace. So, if you're interested in attending, you can go to the Bull Run Restaurant website and purchase tickets there, and it's 6:00 PM again this Thursday night. We have a public hearing which will now begin, and --
Mr. Chairman, the Board of --
-- notice please.
Yep, the Board of Selectmen has scheduled the public hearing for Monday, September 25, 2017, at 7:15 PM, Groton Town Hall, Selectman's Meeting Room 34173, Groton, Mass. The purpose of the hearing will be to discuss laying out Chamberlain Mills Lane as a public way as contained in the October 23, 2017 Fall Town Meeting warrant. Copies of the plans are in file in the Selectman's office at the Groton Town Hall. All interested parties are covered through 10. Board of Selectmen -- Mr. Chairman, in your packet, you have a letter from the Planning Board. The Planning Board has accepted and adopted and said that it's built to the subsequent standards, and they're recommending to the Board of Selectmen that you adopt the layout. That's a memorandum dated September 8th from Takeshi Tada, the land use director, Town Planner. Just one thing, the Planning Board also approved the release of Chamberlain's Mill Performance Barn with the exception of a small amount, $3,900 retained to cover the potential cost of replacing four trees within the right-of-way. So I'd ask for any acceptance with that condition?
Contingent on that.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And representing the applicant, Attorney Collins, you're with us tonight.
Yes, thank you, Josh. This development is located off of Route 40 and Schoolhouse Road. It's a small nine-lot subdivision that Bob Kylie developed. One of the nice things about this development is that it could have actually supported more than nine lots. Bob gifted better than 11 acres to the water department to provide the necessary offsets for a future municipal well site. So the site, which originally was close to 30 acres, was essentially divided in half, and Bob gave away roughly half of it, which occurred before the development started. But it's a very nice special permit subdivision under flexible bylaw, and the subdivision improvements have been completed to the satisfaction of the Planning Board and the Board's engineer. So it's timely that at this point that it would be ready for the Board to vote to lay it out as a public way.
Very good. Questions from the Board?
Just wanted to alert the Board, all abiders were notified of this layout hearing tonight. She may want to ask for public comment. Oh, and I forgot to ask you to open the public hearing.
No, you did.
Oh, did they do that?
Yeah, you did. And actually, can I just say one thing about the abiders? I sent them --
Was the motion made?
I don't remember you making the motion.
Someone want to move to open the public hearing?
I'm moving to open the public hearing backdated to 7:15.
Thank you, Barry.
Do you want me to repeat everything I already said?
No, 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 no. It's backdated.
Just make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'm voting to open the public hearing.
Motion have made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So everything Bob said now applies?
Yeah. But can I just say two things? You did say it's time to open the public hearing, so you're off dog. But the one thing that I should tell the Board, when I brought this into Dawn and we set up the time, I did actually send a letter to each one of the property owners, and I gave you copies of those. One of the nine property owners contacted me with a question which I was able to answer, but you may well want to ask because there might be somebody here.
Oh, I --
I don't --
You know him, you know him.
Yeah, yeah. But in any event, it's ripe for acceptance.
Are you at liberty to tell us the question in the confidential, or?
It was very minor. He wanted to know actually how far the right-of-way extended into his lot, and I told him to go out and look for the grant of bounds.
Basically, it's a 40-foot right-of-way, I presume, for that subdivision?
Yeah, if I recall correctly, yeah.
So the roadway's probably an 18-foot wide road, or 20-foot roadway, so about 10 feet?
Yeah, so I said, you know, it's about 10 feet. But I explained to him that there are grant of bounds that our bylaw requires.
Fair enough. He gets to cut the grass and not pay taxes, isn't he?
That's right.
So, not seeing any more questions from the Board. Is there anybody from the public that has questions on this? Not seeing any questions from the public.
Must have answered the questions.
Any motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing on Chamberlain Mills Road.
Lane.
Lane.
Pardon me.
Someone second?
Second.
So, motions made and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone want to make a motion to recommend adopting the layout for Chamberlain Mills Lane?
Holding back $3,900 for trees.
Holding back?
Yes, and that's something Mr. Kylie agreed to.
Someone want to offer this motion?
I move that we vote to adopt Chamberlain Mills --
The layout of Chamberlain --
Layout Chamberlain Mills Lane contingent upon a holdback of $3,900 --
$900 until next spring.
Until the consensus that bond had been satisfied.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That's unanimous.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Looks distinguished.
He already voted, Bob, he didn't have to do it.
No, that's why I didn't want to say it. I had it. Very distinct.
Mr. Chairman, with the Finance Committee here, I'd like to go over some budget issues with the -- on the warrant. If you look on page two, or the number two of my Town Manager's Report, which I have up on the screen, which is page three in your packets, I start outlining some of the things that I did after last week's meeting, and there's one correction I want to make. As far as the annual operating budget, we'll be recommending $14,500 worth of expenditures. We removed the request for the $5,000 for the Sustainability Commission from the budget as requested by the Board. If that $14,500 is passed, we will have a balance in the unexpendanted tax capacity of $161,679, which we talked about earlier, which will be used to hopefully fund the FY19 budget. As far as the senior center design, I updated the wording to include the word "expansion" after the word "renovation," as the Board directed me last week. I will let you know that we opened up the RFPs, came in last week. We received three bids for the architect, which the Senior Center Building Committee will be meeting Wednesday morning to review them, and we received five for the owner's project manager. We will be reviewing those as well, coming up with a recommendation for Town Meeting and an exact number. Right now, I'm carrying $400,000, of which $175,000 will come from the receipts reserved for appropriation, and the remaining 225 there in that neighborhood will come from free cash. As far as the Groton Dunstable Capital Stabilization Fund, the Board needs to consider the amount you want to add. I am recommending $500,000, so that's a typo in my Town Manager's Report. I apologize. I'm recommending a $500,000 transfer into that fund. I'm hoping the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen accept that. As far as cyclical inspections goes, under Article 10, we talked about that at the meeting last week, and I amended the wording of the article. Town Council approved that we get pricing to do the entire inspections in one year. Well, actually, it'll be a little bit more than one year, but all upfront instead of doing it over five years. It will be in the neighborhood of $110,000, but I set a bid due date for October 12th, so I'll have an exact number for you on October 12th, which is well in advance of the Town Meeting, so we can advertise it and let people know what that number is. So that was something else that the Board of Selectmen asked me to do. I removed the article on polling location in places of worship, as the Board asked, and I amended the CPC bylaw to further clarify the article to include the entire paragraph B, which we will provide the old wording in the Town Meeting handout, so residents are aware of the change. I also added a disclaimer to both citizen petition articles voted by the Board last week, or discussed by the Board last week, which basically said that it is not the opinion of the exact wording, is that the following summary is prepared by the petitioners and represents their view on the article. The Board also needs to decide whether or not you want to change the order of the articles, which we can talk about in a minute, but I just would ask you to go to page five in the book, and I'll try to get it up here on the screen, and we'll go through it. But this gives you the balances and what we're recommending in the various articles of all the Finance Committees here. I'd like to go through that very quickly. Right now, as you know, we have a tax levy, unexpendanted balance of $176,179. If those pass, we will have a balance, remaining balance of $161,679. Free cash is certified at $2.3 million. I'm recommending $500,000 into the cap stabilization fund, $10,000 into the stabilization fund, $225 for the senior center design, $500,000 into the school capital stabilization fund, $346,860 to fund the telephone system and internet infrastructure for the Groton Dunstable Regional School. I'm carrying a number of $110,000 for cyclical inspections, and $45,000 for the complete streets, excuse me, engineering. That will leave at the end of the Town Meeting a balance of $632,401 in free cash. We're going to discuss whether or not you want to offset the tax rate, which we can do, but I also want to point out that the plan that the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen adopted last year to help pay down some debt is to use free cash to offset the debt service and paid-down principle, so that we bond less and we're able to fit that all within the limit without needing an override, debt exclusion override. We call for a $227,000 transfer out of free cash at the Spring Town Meeting for that purpose. So you take $227,000, that'll leave you a balance of $377,000 if I do my math right? No, $227,400.
What'd you say, $225?
$227, which leaves a balance of 405.
Yes.
I had 277 in my -- when I did that, I apologize. So that'll leave a balance of 405 in free cash, which we could pay down more principal to help us if we want. So there's always that potential to do that. So those are those, that's the financial numbers there. We're also, the Sewer Commission needs $90,000 out of their surplus account, which has $545,000 in it, which will leave a balance of $455,281. And we took out the, you see, I had the community preservation funds at $10,000, and it still stays $10,000. That article got withdrawn from the warrant, so that article was taken off the warrant as well. So, what I think the Finance Committee would help the Board of Selectmen decide and offer advice on is the $500,000 for the cap staff for the schools, and whether or not you want to use any free cash to offset the tax rate, the fiscal '18 tax rate. I would say, Gary, those are the two issues. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Questions from this Board?
Defer to the Fin.
Yeah, why don't we let the Fin com go? I agree with you, Barry. Thank you.
So we did not debate a number on the, for the towns municipal capital stabilization fund? We've got to come up with a much more recognizable term for that. We did not debate a specific number. We did vote to recommend that it be created. We did not vote on a specific number for hearing that a conversation with folks here.
I'm sorry, are you talking about the municipal cap staff?
He didn't say the school, the towns.
So we are creating a stabilization fund for the purposes of the district.
Yeah, so you're talking about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Like I said, we need a much crisper, snappier name.
It's the school district capital stabilization.
So, you know, in the discussions we had, again, we didn't debate it at length, we did not vote on it, but the numbers that I sort of heard people talking about were somewhere in the $400,000 to $600,000 range. And then with respect to offsetting the tax rate, we did take a vote on that, and the Finance Committee voted to recommend that we offset the tax rate by a $0 amount.
All right, setting aside the district state capital stabilization fund, what about the other transfers? Did you take a position on those?
Which ones in particular?
The $10,000 of the stabilization fund, the $225 for the senior center design, and so forth, as free cash usage, as shown in the second column.
Thank you.
Is that clear?
I'm just pointing there.
I do need the notes. So, transfer the $10,000 we voted to recommend, the senior center design we did not vote to recommend at this point?
You didn't take a position, you mean?
We did not take a position at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good clarification. Thank you, Josh.
What were the other ones here?
The town capital sta --
The town cap staff?
Town cap stabilization. No, there's two stabilization, both at $500,000. One was the towns replenishment into our own capital stabilization, which is the first line item.
Article 5.
We didn't vote on that. The vote was the $10,000.
Article 5. We did not vote on that yet either.
Did you vote on Article 9?
We just voted.
How about the phone system?
Fine.
We did vote on that one, and it was supported unanimously.
The cyclical inspections?
We did not because we were waiting for the information.
Complete streets.
But there was a definite consensus that we liked the idea, assuming that it made financial sense.
Can I just ask a question about that particular?
Yeah, people should jump in if you want to add flavor.
So theoretically, if we spread it out over five years at $22,000 a year, and we also had the same price of doing it all at once for $110,000, we're not getting any benefit by doing it all at once.
We are getting --
Yes, we are.
Oh, the two, it's the $20,000, not $22,000?
No, no. The benefit is that we can get potential more revenue because the houses are revalued more revenue.
Yes, I understand that, but the cost, it's just five times --
Yes, and let me clarify that. Because I carry that number for now, I will have the exact number on October 12th.
Right.
So then you can make a better decision at that point.
Because if we're only talking about spending money, if it is the same spread out over five years, that's better than all at once. It's like we're getting an interest-free loan, and inflation may drive it up. But we're getting the benefit of the additional growth sooner, right?
Yes, that's exactly correct.
As well as more accurate assessments in town, which is something we should always strive for.
Yes, okay.
Four years compounded.
It could be quite substantial. Just four years compounded could be quite substantial.
Right.
Well, I guess it's four years, slightly negative 20% compounded.
I guess I would --
And, you know, we should all understand, there is a, you know, you never know, we could do this full assessment and find out that our numbers go down. Not likely, but it could. Nonetheless, we should do it because we should have accurate assessments.
Well, and there, I think there's a benefit to having the whole town done it at once because everybody's kind of on the same field.
Yeah, fairness issue.
Or the same people have done it, and, you know, it didn't change a whole thing. Okay, thank you.
We also did take a position on the complete streets engineering. We voted to recommend it.
And how about any of the other appropriations, or were you kind of neutral on those?
Specific to appropriations, I think the biggest one that we need to is the amount of money going into the DDRSD capital stabilization fund. Senior center design and then, I mean, we didn't vote on our transfer yet, but we ended at 11:30. I think we called uncle.
Are you planning on taking positions on this stuff?
We're going to, as soon as we're down here, we're going to go next door and try to --
And then you're going to come report back to us?
Sure.
Yeah, you'll probably be gone, but if you're here, I'll be happy to come back.
Fair enough.
Sorry, I think that's all the financial piece, Gary.
Is there a sense, I mean, it would be interesting to get a sense from the Board what you think in terms of dollar amounts to put into the DDRSD capital stabilization fund?
Well, I'll let you know that I think that if we were to move forward or recommend, and I'm going to support the $346,000 for the infrastructure, telephone system and internet, and I'm comfortable with the $500,000 figure, as I had expressed last week.
I'm sure.
So I think that technically, one way of looking at this is, it's almost $850,000 this year, but $500,000 of it would be going into the stabilization fund. That's my position. It's what I'm going to support. Other Selectmen can speak for themselves.
Can I ask a question? What was the, what was the plan for next year's capital, like, spending?
For something.
So, and thank you for asking. That's what I wanted to comment on because I know that there's some information that people may want to consider when thinking about this, because tomorrow, the school committee is going to be discussing the audit of the regional school district, several different pieces. There will be an opportunity to possibly make some adjustments, however, those adjustments for reallocation and some changes may require one-time funding to make those changes in order for long-term savings. So with that said, you all know from the last time I was here, our E&amp;D is not quite as, not that healthy level as the municipal stabilization fund is at this point, and we would not be dipping into the E&amp;D until it is at a point where it's healthy and we can replenish it, as I would imagine that, you know, municipal would not want to do the same as well. So when thinking about that, you know, in order to make changes, it may take some one-time costs, and both towns would be assessed for that. I don't know how tomorrow's meeting's going to go, and we will have public forums in regards to any possible changes that are made in the district, but that is something to consider. As far as the following year, again, that plays on E&amp;D, right? If we have to --
I just wondered, I couldn't remember what, I got to the back of the plan to see what the plan, there was a plan put out.
Yeah, yes.
I can't believe what you said.
Roughly, roughly the portion over the next couple of years for Groton was roughly about 450, yeah, 475.
So, based on that, that's why the $500,000 recommendation is where I came from, and having $500,000 in a municipal stabilization fund for the district capital needs is $500,000 more than we have today.
So, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the FY, the slide from the summit, and my slide shows for FY19 for Groton, you're looking at $576,341. So, and these are directly from the slides from the summit meeting. That's why I came up with the $600,000 number when I saw it, because I'm reading 576,341 directly from the presentation revised PDF from the Groton Dunstable School District. So maybe there's a discrepancy?
No, no, the slides are correct. When I say roughly about 500, if you take the average over the course of the plan and interest rate.
But next year's, next year, it's a, no, no, no qualification about this number. Next year's request, at this point in time, you guys haven't discussed, from what we know, is $576,341.
To Groton or to?
To Groton. To Dunstable, it's 225,659. So that's why I had the $600,000 number in there, because that's what I saw.
But that $700,000 number includes 340, I believe, for the, for this year's, for that separate warrant item. If you back that out, I believe you get the number, was the 400 number, which, and I think that's what the Fin com was talking about, 400 to 600, I believe. And Josh picked, Josh is in the middle, so. But if you look at the detail, go to page one, the one I have says 700-something thousand minus 348, which is the 40-something or whatever it is, but it's in the 400 range without that big item in there. Do you have that on your sheet?
What's your 576?
576 number is right from the FY19 request.
Right, and it adds up all the stuff that says, if you look at the list, in that list, there's 340-something, 345,000 for the infrastructure, which I believe is a school.
Marlena, could you help clarify if that infrastructure for the phone system is included within that 500 and almost $600,000 of a?
I believe the total amount for Groton was, including the Y infrastructure for FY19, and I have no literature with me, so I'm working from memory, it's roughly about $750,000, and the Y infrastructure is roughly about, what was it?
346.
346. So that's basically the number we're looking at. As far as the summit, I don't know if there's another capital item from the plan that was in there. I don't know, because I don't have anything in front of me, so I am working from memory, and I am getting old.
If I can make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
You can make a suggestion, sir.
If the numbers are four, between four and five, if that 346 is included, 500 makes sense, and that's what I would recommend. If Marlena and the school committee come back and Barry's right with the 572, I think the Selectman and Finance Committee should consider 600,000. You have the ability to do that based on the plan. I think that's the simplest way to handle it.
So, can we, I'm not comfortable voting, period, until I get this number.
Yeah, we can wait until next week back, or actually, you can wait until October 23rd.
Well, I just want to, like, just get this clarified.
When is the warrant being published?
Next, I would like to know the number next week when I go to the printer on Tuesday.
That's --
But it could just be deferred until Town Meeting.
It could be.
But I think 500 is a good number to vote on right now. If we need to adjust it based on school committee input after the meeting, what are you meeting, Marlena, tomorrow night?
Yep.
Okay. And we're meeting next Monday.
I think it's dangerous to put a number out there and then change it.
It's not dangerous to ever put money into the capital stabilization fund, because that number can always be amended and added to in the Spring Town Meeting to meet up the differential between the number that we put in now and what the needs are to account for the following fiscal year of spending.
That's not what I said.
That's what I said.
I understand. I'm very uncomfortable saying a number out that we're going to put in without having the data of what the expenditure will be next year. If our intention is funding the Groton municipal capital budget similarly to how we anticipate spends required for the Groton Dunstable Regional School District capital, and if that's our goal, our model, I'd like to know the number, like we know our number, and have it for certain. And since there's some discrepancies, and we're not quite sure what that number is, if we get clarification from the school district financial office, we'll have the number, and we can come next week and, you know, debate it again.
Fair enough.
But that's just fine.
Anything further on this? Seeing our hearing none? Thank you, and let's move on.
Mr. Chairman, I am dyslexic, and I apologize. It is 272,000.
What is 272,000?
I'm sorry, the amount of money we need to free cash to pay down debt in the spring according to the plan. I said 227. It's 272. So the number 370 of a balance is, I was correct when I said that.
So the free cash balance would be based on what is proposed at the moment, 370,000.
Correct.
Are we going to discuss offsetting the tax rate?
That's what I'm, I'm right on that right now.
We're going to go through this whole thing now, we just, yes.
I'm on item number three, which is offsetting the tax rate. Do you want to take money out of free cash to offset the tax rate? The Fin com is recommending zero.
Did you, excuse me, did you come up with a long-term tax savings to the public if we spend money to pay down debt?
I presented that to you last year when you voted to accept it. We showed you those numbers of what we would anticipate saving. I don't have them in my memory now.
Mark, thank you for such a high opinion you have of me and my-
In your memory?
Memory.
I don't have them with me.
However-
Yes, I know.
Without having that again in front of me, I can't remember. Okay, so we don't know what those numbers were, what those numbers would be now.
All we know was, without having the exact numbers, it was extremely beneficial to the taxpayer.
That's my recollection also, but-
So why don't you get us those numbers and come back to us with that one for next week?
Absolutely.
That will help.
And I don't mean to table the debate about-
No, no, I agree with you.
Tax rate, offset tax rate versus not, I just-
But so that-
But you're suggesting that the, that strategies from last year should be used to, to negate the possibility of offsetting tax rate this year?
I'm, I'm saying that I would be willing to consider the idea that a long-term taxpayer savings is more beneficial than a, than a one-year taxpayer savings. If it's greater cumulative or even, you know, over a couple of years.
Well then, that means that any operational savings that we have can be said to be valuable and that we never need to think about offsetting the tax rate because we're constantly looking for operational savings.
I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying I'm not looking to offset the tax rate. I just want to understand what the, if I put 150,000, if we only have, whatever the number is, let's say, Jack, let's say you say, I think we have $300,000 to play with, excuse me, play with is the wrong word. I think we have $300,000 that we could feel like we have flexibility in either returning to taxpayers or doing something else with. And I would say, okay, if we put 200,000 of that to pay down debt and 100,000 to pay down tax rate, what does that yield versus the other way around?
So-
A scenario just to see.
So based on what Mark just clarified a moment ago, with the 277, 72,000 dollar figure, if we use that amount again, that would give us a free cash balance of 370,000 dollars left. And from my recollection, the town accountant is comfortable with 200 to 250,000 remaining in free cash.
And the town manager is comfortable with 300 to 400,000 dollars.
I think, I mean, for me, certainly to Barry's point, I need to have an understanding of what debt would we need to pay down, or is the, I mean, does the whole thing? Because I think in addition to the idea of potentially paying something down or reducing taxes, I mean, we have all those other funds that we just talked about that we might want to fund that I mean, they- It's not, it's not a binary A or B kind of thing. There's lots of choices.
Were you, Josh, were you-
Maybe I'm wrong. Well, so is there, the choice is, we use it to pay down debt and we still have this 300,000-ish left. And so that we can offset the tax rate. What else can we do with it? And what are the other possibilities that we're debating, if that's what I-
There are, there are, no, we could put more money into capital stabilization, into the district capital stabilization. We could fund more of the senior center design using that instead of using the 175,000 as proposed.
Allison, Allison just said that, I forgot about that. Thank you, Allison. Out of that remaining 372,000, 100,000 is slated to go into OPEB next year out of free cash as well. So now you're down to 272. You're dangerously close to the number that I don't, I don't want to go in.
If we don't offset the tax rate, essentially, as it stands right now, we are just going to hang on to the money?
Well, we're going to use, at the spring town meeting, if you have a balance of 632, we're going to use 272,000 to pay down debt and 100,000 to go into OPEB, which will leave you a balance of 277.
And, and we would just hang on to that 270.
Recertify the following year, correct.
Because in your policy, which I know we're not exactly discussing yet, or your proposed policy-
I'm waiting to get all feedback, yep.
There were some other things. And if we vote to not offset the tax rate, is it implied or is it assumed that some of these other things might come up and we might spend the money on them?
It's up to you, yes. That is a potential.
It's a good bet.
Not necessarily.
Would we have to vote on any one of them?
Everything is voted on. You can't spend, yeah, you can't spend anything without, A, the board putting it before the town meeting, and B, town meeting appropriating it. You can't spend, the only thing that we can spend without a future town meeting appropriation is the reserve fund out of the finance committee. Because once they have that money, it's up to them to disperse that. Everything else is town meeting approval.
So there's paying down debt, very worthy purpose to use money for, it seems to me. The OPEB is that huge unfunded pension liability that we have, is that correct?
Health insurance liability, not pension liability, health insurance liability.
But that's just the in and out money, right?
No, no, we're actually starting to increase the fund.
Actually, he wants to increase the number above what each year-to-year's liability is.
Last year we added 100,000. I want to add 100,000 again next year.
Which I might surprise you on in my position.
Something to look forward to.
So a question that's worthy of asking would be that we are currently going against the tax levy as proposed for only 14,500, correct? So if we used 14,500 of free cash to offset the tax rate, then the tax rate would stay exactly what it is today, correct?
It would stay at 1865, yes, sir.
So something worthy of offsetting the tax rate would be, if you didn't want the tax rate to change from what it's currently set at, that you may consider offsetting the tax rate by 14,500. As a matter of fact, that's what I propose.
That's just seems like such a cosmetic-
Yeah, well, you can put makeup on a pimple sometimes to look pretty, Jack.
Is that a lipstick on a pig?
I did not say that.
I'd be embarrassed to say that, that I approve something like that.
Really?
Yeah, just to do-
Just to keep the tax rate level? What's wrong with that?
Yeah, because I think we're basically trying to give the false impression that costs aren't rising by spending 14,000 to do it.
It's your choice.
So it's the tax rate for the year that we are currently in and already paying down?
It offsets the fiscal 18 tax rate, yes. Just keeps it neutral.
That's what we set it at. That's the only reason that I would suggest.
100,000, just for example, is about 24 dollars off the average tax bill.
With three cheese steaks.
Or three cheese steak sandwiches.
Is that better or else?
I gotta, I gotta repeat my refrain when we talk about these things. When we, when we talk about three cheese steak subs as a way of saying, well, you know, it's not really worth doing. I mean, it denigrates the whole principle of doing it. It absolutely does. When you, when you put something in the terms of it's a cheese steak sub, why would you bother? That, that is offensive to some number of taxpayers, including me.
If every household got a free cheese steak dinner, what's offensive?
You're doing it again, Josh.
It's not offensive, Jack.
You're doing it again.
Well, it means something more. I think it means different things to different-
Be that as it may, if you want to offset the tax rate, you can do it by zero, you can do it by 14,500, you can do it by 100,000.
Or any amount we want.
Or any amount you want.
Up to 632,000 balance.
Given the other appropriations.
I'm good with 632,000.
All right, seriously, do we want to take a position on offsetting the tax rate?
I would like to offset the tax rate. I think it's important, if only in principle, to demonstrate that this is the way we think.
I'd like to propose that we do that because last year, if you recall, the town meeting said no.
Absolutely.
You know, so we can only say-
It's your motion, not the finance committee's. So you give me a number that you want in the motion. If the board votes that, that's what goes before town meeting.
I'd say 100,000.
So last year it was proposed to-
400, right?
400 to offset, and the, the discussion at town meeting ended up taking 200?
Town meeting, zero.
Zero.
They, they, if I recall correctly, my interpretation of town meeting gone, gone totally a direction I didn't expect it to go was, we think that things are going to come up involving certain entities in town that might need this money and therefore you may not give it back to us.
And at the moment, we're setting aside chunks of money for certain entities if they pass town meeting.
Absolutely. Because we turned back about 377,000 to cash last year.
This is a different situation.
No, I, I just articulated what I saw last year.
So if, if we vote the 100,000 that you're proposing and the town meeting follows through and votes that also, the tax bills that we are paying currently will actually be reduced?
No, 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 the increase, if you look at the numbers that I gave you last week, we're expecting a 162 dollar increase in the average tax bill based on the budget that was approved at the town meeting, it will reduce the increase by 24 dollars. So instead of going up 162, it'll go up 138.
I'm just trying to remember actually though, the way that they bill, they bill the first two quarters based on a guess or on an estimate?
No, it's actually based on the previous year, yes.
And so?
It's your third quarter tax bill and fourth quarter tax bill that will go up on average 168 dollars over those two periods, 162 dollars. That would be reduced by 24 dollars.
Yeah, or you could say it would reduce by 18 percent.
So it would-
Which would be a different way of determining something, a non-cheese steak way, but perhaps a more, perhaps a more dignified way.
People in Philadelphia are going to hurt us.
But this isn't changing any of the amount that we talk about paying down debt surface?
No.
It would, it would bring the, it would bring the balance, what I'm, what I'm afraid of, Allison, is by doing that 100,000, I don't like to go into the next year less than 300, but this would bring us down to 172,000 if we funded OPEB.
From that 632.
Correct. Because it'd be 632 minus 272 minus 100 for OPEB minus 100 for offsetting the tax rate.
Now, the, the thing is though, that what that does is it puts the money back in the taxpayer pocket. So Mark likes to keep a balance because of unexpected things. It, it doesn't prevent us from funding those things some year in the future because we have that levy limit capacity. We're just putting the money back in taxpayers' pockets for a period of time and saying, we may ask you for this again later, but we may not. And in the meanwhile, we think it should stay in your pocket.
Because it is your money.
But also keep, keep in mind too, which, which gets forgotten, this is the first year since I've been here that it won't impact it. You, your increase the following year, if you don't offset the tax rate by 100,000 the following year, will go up to 2 and 1/2 plus another 24 dollars in the example that I gave you because you don't have the free cash to offset it the following year.
And, and so while it is a bump next year, in that following year, that is larger than it would have been, that bump is paid for by money the taxpayers were holding instead of paid for by money that we held, taxpayer money that we held.
If they didn't spend it.
Right.
If we wanted to offset the tax rate by 146 dollars, how much would we need to return free cash?
By 146 dollars?
That's about 632,000.
Yeah, 632,000.
Right?
Right.
That's what he's doing.
We want to give them a gift.
Well, I just did some-
Yes, good. I mean, if we wanted to say, we want a tax increase this year, then we could do that.
If you take the 632,000, there would, everybody's tax bill, average tax bill-
Would be flat.
Would be flat. The average tax bill.
Finally get my 0 percent that I've been asking for, for year after year after year.
Now, the problem with that though, is the following year, you would see it go up by double.
2 and 1/2 percent plus that amount of money.
Unless you have another 632,000.
Potentially, unless we budget at just-
At zero.
Yes. So now that we've done all of these variations, what is the preference of this board on offsetting the tax rate?
So 100,000 dollar return or offset of tax rate would leave us 175,000, Mark, in free cash?
Yeah, let me just, just to make sure I'm doing my math in my head right.
You, you like to have 300,000, Tricia likes to have 200,000, we've-
About 175.
We've lived, we've certainly lived with less.
150.
We certainly can live with more.
160.
We're talking about, we're talking about expecting-
Yeah, 160,000 would be the balance.
We're talking about having, publicly saying that we expect revenues to rise more than we, they have in the past. I think that, I think that we, I think it's reasonable to say that taxpayers, given that optimism, here's a little bit of money back to you.
But our free cash number, 2.3 million dollars, is coming in 800,000 dollars higher than expected due to the state require, allowing us to release the holdback, is that correct? So what I'm just saying is, is that the, that this big number of 2.3 million dollars, in some ways, is 800,000 artificially higher than it would have been.
Yeah, but in many ways, it's, it's holdback of taxpayer money that we were holding. And, and I think it's quite legitimate to say that we had to hold some of your money, but now the state has allowed us to return it. Instead of spending it, it should go to you.
That's a great way of looking at it.
Yeah.
And if we didn't have that, it would be very difficult to be funding the two stabilization accounts we proposed that are a million dollars. It'd be very difficult.
So we can say, listen, we've accomplished a variety of things. We've accomplished some, some rainy day funds or some stabilization accounts that we've always wanted to accomplish. But we also believe that this money was your money and the state made us hold it. Now the state's allowing it to be released and we want to accomplish three different things. Stabilization, two stabilizations and, and offset your tax rate.
By the way, Jack, I agree with you on the undergrund.
Good.
You made a motion, I didn't hear, did somebody second that? I'll second it for you.
I didn't make a motion, I think I threw out a number.
Oh, I thought you voted a motion.
I move, I move, we vote to offset the tax rate by 100,000.
Nobody else seconds, or I will?
I'll second it.
All right, Becky does. We have a motion to offset the tax rate by 100,000. Further discussion?
What if it works out that it's better to return another 277 or 275 K to taxpayers to put into his debt next year?
Make a motion to amend.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, but-
In the spring?
Wait.
Well, you cannot amend, you can't amend a tax give back in spring.
You can't go in spring town meeting and offset the tax rate?
No, 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 the tax rate gets offset before we set it, which will be in November.
You have to do it this time.
You got to do it at this meeting, you can't do it.
Well, then you got to make a decision on the debt situation that isn't-
Next week, I'm going to give you the information next week.
What, what was your question?
Like, so my statement is, is that right now, in my mind, I'm playing with, I'm playing with a number that's about 375 K. And approximately 275 K of that is potential debt payment.
Yeah.
And 100,000 of that is offsetting tax rate according to Jack's proposal.
Right.
However, if it doesn't make financial sense from a taxpayer point of view to offset debt, or it doesn't make enough sense to me, then rather than just giving back 100, I'd prefer to give back 370. That's my preference, my opinion. So-
We'll have those numbers for you next week.
So while I'm in favor of Jack's number, I don't want to be bound by not being able to up, up it next week. Not that I want to delay this necessarily.
It could be a Christmas week. I don't think you're prevented from mumping it.
I don't know that.
No, you're not, you're not.
I will abstain then from the vote if that's a tough opinion.
Why couldn't you vote to approve a 100,000 dollar tax give back now and then?
If you amend it to at least 100,000, I'll go for it.
Okay. At least. Amended to at least, please.
Motion to amend to at least 100,000 has been offered. Someone want to second that? Barry seconds it. So now we will vote if there's no further discussion, is there?
Well, I just want to make sure that if we're, we're voting on a motion that's an at least number, that if it changes, we will have to vote it.
Yeah, next week.
We'll clarify it, correct.
Okay.
Do we have discussion on the amendment or on the vote?
On both, that would be fine.
My concern is just that in giving back that money that the townspeople have already allocated in the taxes that we're creating a cliff next year, I mean, it's not, I don't think we're thinking that this is a long-term situation. So I'm a little concerned with what those ramifications would be.
You think we should hang on to it?
You're absolutely right.
I think where we know we have a number of capital costs from the district and we have so much other, we have so many questions at this point financially about what our needs are longer term, that to me, it makes more sense potentially to hold on to this money. Particularly if it's kind of the 100,000, which is not as meaningful a number as the 375-ish.
Philosophically, I get, I get exactly what you're saying. Philosophically, to me, it comes down to, do I want the government holding on to my money? Or do I want to hold on to my money until the government needs it? And, and I've always been that way and I would always rather-
I think there are a lot of, a lot of folks who wouldn't necessarily understand that in giving their money back to them, we're saying, but next year we're going to need that plus your standard increase.
Theoretically, maybe.
I, I agree. There are a lot of folks who don't understand the free cash issue anyway, period, period. What, what I think we're sending is a message that we will always work to keep money in your pocket unless we need it. We don't need that money right now, that's why it's called free cash. This tells people that, that's the thing they understand. And by doing this thing, while they may not understand the mechanism of it, they can trust that that's what we're doing.
But I'm not comfortable at this point saying we don't need it because I don't have enough of a grasp on what our needs are for the next several years to be able to say, we don't need this.
Okay. So effectively, what you're saying is, I don't know what we need, but I know how much I can tax you. I'm going to tax you as much as I think I need to and then I'll figure out what I need.
You guys have different ways of looking at it and I understand what Jack's saying and I very much understand what you're saying, to be honest.
Yeah, I could, you're point two.
I think if we do vote to offset the tax rate by the 100,000, we do need to make it clear at town meeting that this is a one-year thing and in, and the effect may be that next year, your tax increase looks larger than it would if we didn't give this to you this year.
Unless, of course, we had free cash to offset the tax rate the following year.
Which we might, but that we might not.
And that's, and that's correct, always the case.
I think too, part of my developing opinion on this all is that I don't think that taxpayers have a good enough understanding of free cash in general. So I don't think it should be a mechanism that we're relying on. I think that if we want to transfer money into a stabilization, it should be in the budget and, and that this is overly complicated.
As complicated as it is, and it is overly complicated, that free cash has multiple components that equal it and that if the general public doesn't understand it, then we have to do a better job along with the FinCom and the town manager of explaining it. But free cash is a mechanism from budget savings and increased revenues that will occur. And less budgeting is done much more tightly and revenue forecasts are done much more tightly and the crystal ball is working perfectly. more tightly, and the crystal ball is working perfectly, in which case, we wouldn't have to worry about free cash, but this is...
It was explained to me at one point, that you're always going to have free cash because we're not allowed to exceed our budget, and no one can make their expenses come out precisely at the budgeted amount, they have to come in at less than the budgeted amount, so there's always going to be some leftover.
Understood, but I think we could...
Revenues, hold on one sec, except for snow and ice, but the revenues are the ones that have to exceed the expenditures, you're not always going to have free cash, you could have a revenue deficit if you overestimate the revenues, that's what the state's going on right now, that's why the state has a deficit.
You follow that?
So you gotta be, you gotta be careful.
Right, oh, okay, but it...
I get your point.
On the budget side...
On the budget side, yeah, you're never gonna, snow and ice, though, you could...
If everything is perfect, you're going to end up with change left over, at least.
I agree with that, I agree with that, Becky.
I agree, but I think that we should be aiming for a much smaller number that's available for the rolls of different cash. Where I think that if we were to budget both revenues and expenditures more accurately, put these line items into a budget with the understanding that if something happens, you know, these are kind of a backup contingency amount, then we're, I think that would be clearer for citizens to understand how we want to spend their money.
What I think the takeaway that you will have after having a discussion with Mark is going to need to be followed up at next week's meeting, in terms of helping to formulate a position on this, as well as the budgeting process in general, and this is an ongoing conversation that is going to be had for many months moving forward, Allison.
Yep.
The way, the way I sometimes look at, look at, you know, returning back to taxpayers is, we budgeted this amount to the departments, and a certain amount of that was underspent, and we don't, we don't want to stop our departments from having that budget, we don't want to not, you know, let them budget that again, but we didn't need to spend it, so therefore, we're going to return it back to you because we didn't need to spend it, that's kind of one of the ways I look at it, you know, the revenue side is different, I understand the revenue side, but from the budget side, the, what we, what we budgeted and we didn't spend, I kind of like seeing that returned back, because in a corporation, that'd be profit, and you potentially return it to your shareholders or other things like that, right? So, to me, there's a parallel, now, I understand that that is challenging, and I, but that has always been my parallel of why I give money back to the rate, to the taxpayers.
So, right now, we do have a motion for a hundred thousand dollars, Malane has a question, then we'll move to the motion.
So, question and just information, in regards to giving money back, I absolutely can see Barry's point in regards to giving money back, that you budgeted for, and as you came in, whether, regardless of how the course of you got to those figures, whether it be overestimating expenses, underestimating expenses, however you're going to do it, money's left over, the people should have the opportunity, I want the opportunity to tell you I want it or not, but on the other side, I do want to make it sure that everyone is on the same page with me, as a school community member, we have already voted that we will be doing a presentation that will lay everything out for all the taxpayers to know exactly what is on docket for September for capital expenses, for May for capital expenses, the remainder, remaining that is happening for FY nineteen, as well as all the previous following years, all the following years, so, I, we are going to do our part to educate in regards to those one-time expenses that are coming down the pike, and I think it's important for tax people to understand what they are on both sides, municipal and school, and then let them decide if they want to keep their money, or they want to be held by the town to pay proper things.
Got it. So, motion to offset the tax rate by at least one hundred thousand dollars is on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining?
I don't feel like I have enough information.
So that's, so we can take another vote if you want.
Yeah, it looks like we'll come back to this after we understand more about the debt paydown, and maybe you'll have more information at that point.
Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Chairman.
I think the important thing is that we, we put a stake in the ground of something that we want to do relative to watching taxpayer money, I think that's the most important thing we've done now, whether, no matter what the vote at town meeting happens to be, or what we decide next week.
Don't you say a shovel and not a steak.
No, it's a steak, it's not a shovel.
Mr. Chairman.
It's not a sandwich, though.
Article, Article one and Article nineteen?
Article one.
They, are you talking about the two citizen petitions?
Article one and Article nineteen, the two citizens petitions, before you go through and take positions on the articles, I'm going to assume the order that I presented on Articles two through eighteen are fine with you, I'm going to make that assumption, I could be wrong.
My understanding that Article nineteen may be withdrawn next week.
Okay, nevertheless...
This was the article formerly noted, twenty?
Yes. So, the question to the board is, do you want to have the citizens petitions at the beginning of the meeting, or at the end of the meeting, I would suggest, regardless if that gets withdrawn or not, Josh, that we keep them together, instead of having one at the beginning and one at the end, so the question to the board, do you want them at the beginning or the end?
Allison.
I believe that citizens petitions in general should be at the end, because I feel like the remainder of the articles are recurring annual types of things that are, have a time element to them, whereas the citizens petitions, you know, they make sense timewise for any given town meeting, but they're not, you know, to me, sometimes there's a big difference between the first night of town meeting and the third night of town meeting in terms of getting town business done, so in general, my feeling is that the citizens petition should be at the end, because they don't typically have that type of a time.
Very little recurring here, other, you know, Articles one through maybe six, or actually not one, but two through six are recurring fall town meeting articles, the rest are all unique, as unique as the citizens petitions themselves.
They're unique, but they're, they're generally there in terms of what do we do with free cash?
Well, in general, Allison, I very much agree with you about citizens petitions, but in so much as this citizens petition is the revisiting of a previous citizens petition...
No, previous town meeting article, it's not a citizen petition.
Previous town meeting article, and that the divisiveness that has occurred over this article, and the issues surrounding it, I personally don't want to see that hanging over town meeting the entire time we're there, and would rather personally get it out of the way.
I think it's more likely to be brought up after it's decided throughout the remainder of town meeting than it is if it's put to the end.
Okay. Becky, I'm sorry, I don't want to, I'm just going to see...
No, I was just muttering, sorry.
I sounded like I had a comment, I didn't want to jump.
I was actually realizing, I had not thought of that possibility, that if it's at the beginning, there, it might still be brought up later.
What do you mean, brought up later?
Reconsideration.
It could be reconsidered.
So, my, my challenge with this is that I like to look at these things not in a situation by situation by situation, one of the reasons that I think you want to have every citizens petition have that wording on it, is because that should be on every citizen petition. Unfortunately, as we go back in time, there has been town meetings where we've had citizens petitions in the middle of a, of a, of a, of a meeting, and some have been at the end, so we haven't really had any consistency, so...
But we could start now.
We could start now, and that's, that's kind of where I'm getting to this, is that we, we should be making a decision, not, not based on the content of this particular one, but based on how we move forward from here with some type of rule and boundary that says, "Citizen petitions live in this section of the town meeting warrant, and, and they will always go last, they will always go first, there are always going to be somewhere in the middle, or we're going to roll the dice and put it wherever the dice roll," whatever the rule is, I'm okay with, but I don't want to have people feel that their citizens petition was singled out because the Board of Selectmen gave it some special credibility or credence, and therefore decided that we didn't want it interfering with town business, or we didn't want it to be somehow disruptive to the normal course of life. Unfortunately, or fortunately, citizen petition is a normal course of town meeting, it is a normal course of life, it is part of the reality of having an open town meeting, and we need, as a board, it, 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 it gives us a measure of integrity to decide that we are always going to put citizen petition at one place in the warrant as a guiding principle.
I, 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 go ahead. So, I dismerit to that approach, I would also, however, observe that over the years, there has often been an attempt with something of particular significance, citizens petition or not, to judge and place, so for instance, a senior center article, I think even maybe pretty recently, last spring, maybe there was an attempt to make sure that it happened near the beginning of the second night, if I'm not correct, mistaken, and there, I know that's happened other years, sort of looking at, because senior citizens don't, can't stay late if they're coming in the River Court van, or school parents need to be there for something, the schools, it's not unusual to have had thought go into the order of the articles to serve the town and the voters as well as we can, so, while it sounds great to say we should always, we should decide and always do something one way, and that's fair, because that is fairer, I'm not sure that it always ends up being fair, and I, I think that we'll find ourselves faced with wishes to reorder the warrant almost any time that there's a town meeting, so I am, I am okay with, I've come around to the idea that in fact, having, on this particular issue, having this one be first is okay, at first I was surprised, and then I sort of thought, well, maybe it's okay.
Jack?
I'd like to see that, I see citizens, I think there are two issues here, one is the origin of the article, and the other is the order, and I, I think the origin of the article is irrelevant, articles are articles, whether they originated from a department head who has the right to demand that an article be on here, or a citizen who asked a selectman to sponsor an article, and the selectman sponsored it and got it on there, or, or an article that came in because no one was willing to sponsor it, but still there were ten signatures, either way, these are all things that our town has to decide, that's why they're articles in town meeting, and therefore, because they've come to, because they're articles in town meeting, they are all effectively equal, and, and origin shouldn't matter, now, there are things that should matter, such as the strategic timing of them, meaning an important issue that's so important that we want to have full representation, early representation in the meeting so that everybody's there, I think there are legitimate reasons to schedule early for things like that, but I don't believe that origin is a good reason to relegate an, an article to the end, especially where, you know, if I have a citizens petition, and I know I can muster the people, and I know I can get those people to wait late, and I know that my citizens petition is going to be the last thing, that, that kind of actually, to me, sounds very unfair, so, that's, that's my thinking on this.
So, do you like it where it is?
I personally do, yeah.
And...
Or, or perhaps the first non-transfer, you know, as I said, there are roughly six or five routine articles here, maybe this would be the first non-routine article, but an early, I see it as an early article.
I would recommend you just leave it at one.
I support it where it is, I understand, Allison, your point very much, and I've heard motions to reconsider have been talked about for the last twenty-seven years I've been in town, and I don't know if I've ever seen one.
Very, very high bar...
The town moderator, town moderator has to approve.
So, I don't believe I've ever seen one.
Well, I've seen one, because I originated one, but that was a long time ago.
Okay, so, so all I'm saying is...
And it was a previous moderator.
I would just like to see that.
And the, the bar is higher now, as it should be.
Okay, so leave it alone, yeah, by the way, the public hearing has been reopened for this, correct?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
There we are, two of them now. We're going back to that.
Motion to continue the public hearing?
Yes.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the fall town meeting warrant.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All the discussion that we've had, again, up to this point, is still relevant.
Mark, can I interrupt you for just a second, just in terms of order of things, I think that Mark and I had hoped to have the nonprofit council deliver a report from the nonprofit council, we'd actually hoped to have that done on the springtown meeting, didn't, because it was so packed, so we're hoping to allow the nonprofit council to deliver that report.
We'll talk to the moderator.
And that would happen early, but I...
Is there an auditor here reports?
The moderator can allow a report at the beginning of the meeting.
But I just want the board to be aware that that is a request, and make sure that there are no objections by the board.
None.
Okay.
So, do you want to just go through this?
I want to do it right now, Mr. Chairman, does the board want to take a position on Article one?
Do we, do we want to, I mean, we've had some debate back and forth regarding where the article should be placed, I, I can hear the room, do you want, do you want to motion that, or do you want to just let it go? I, I know that it's going to stay at one.
If you accept the order, it's the order is the order.
Although I heard Jack say, you know, maybe somewhere after the, so I don't know that we are at consensus on one.
If you feel necessary to make a motion, please do so.
I don't think we've ever had a motion as to when...
You've never, you just totally had a motion.
I think you kind of heard where things are going to fall.
Well, no, because Jack said maybe it's better as number six, I don't care.
I, I would, I would leave it as one.
I haven't heard from Allison.
I think it belongs at the end.
Yeah, so...
So, if we looked at, I'm, I'm looking here, it appears to me that everything from number two up to twelve, or maybe even thirteen...
Twelve of the other numbers.
Fourteen and fifteen have to do with money. So, we could say, you know, we have, we should deal with everything that has to do with money first, but then...
I just, I think it feels weird to have two citizens petitions opposite each other on a ballot.
Well, Josh, did you say they're going to withdraw it?
I'm pretty sure it's going to be withdrawn.
Keep, keep in mind something, if they want off the warrant, I need the ten signatures of the people that signed it have to sign to take it off.
I've already made that clear.
See, I think the idea that something says citizens petition is irrelevant to the, to the article listings.
I, I get you.
There is relevance to noting within the description that this description did not come because, the town didn't write this, the citizen did, but the fact that it's a citizens petition and its position, I think are irrelevant.
I, I want to double-check something, but I think you have to identify it as a citizens petition because of the signatures, let me double-check that, Jack.
But that's not the point I was making, but I, but what, I, I understand, yep.
Yeah, and I, and I guess you can classify them differently to say, you know, we typically put zoning issues towards the end of the warrant, and that has been historically accurate, we typically put CPC stuff towards the end of the warrant, you know, after the, the regular town budget items, I don't know that we have a place we've historically put feel-good items.
Oh, I'm not feeling good about this.
Or not. Let me, let me put it, you know, I'm having a hard time articulating this, you know, advisory, advisory, or advisory votes, if you will, would be maybe another way to say it.
This is far from advisory.
High discussion, high controversial, whatever, I think we all understand what you're saying.
Cultural issues, how about that?
Okay, well, if you want to offer a motion, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm...
Then...
I'm not going to go.
Want to go, then let's go in order.
Let's move in order. Does the board want to take a position on Article one?
Yes.
No.
Yes, I... You just want to take a position. I want to take a position.
Okay, I don't want to take a position on it.
So...
Do not support.
I do not support.
Do not support.
I have no position at this time.
Abstain.
Do not support.
So, four, zero, one against.
What do you have for prior year bills?
None, so I'm going to just defer that for now, Josh.
Article three.
Those are the departmental transfers, fourteen thousand five hundred, we usually do those, Josh, in, in order, so we have a separate recommendation in the back, so on the ten thousand dollars for town manager expenses to pay for the clerical support?
Support.
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 Support?
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
How granular is that, I mean, is that, if, if you weren't to get that increased amount, can you transfer that from somewhere else within general government, or does it have to be within the town manager whole lines, or...
It's, it has to be in one place to pay, and it's, it can't transfer it because it is a brand-new appropriation, a brand-new program, so I want to have it built into the a brand-new program, so I want to have it built into the budget. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
So, if it was something for, say, additional police wages, you could transfer that from, say, um, the town manager's budget. However, because this has never been in the budget before, this is why it's going against taxation, and therefore, that's why he's asking for it in the fashion that he's asking for it. Does that answer your question, or no? Oh, I'm sorry.
It does. My concern is that I, I think that that amount could be found elsewhere in the budget at this point in the year, so I'm hesitant, but if, if that's not true, because it's a new line item type thing, then?
It's kind of like we're asking the town to appropriate and fund it.
Yeah, because it's new. If the town says, "Don't fund it," then it doesn't happen, Allison.
Correct.
Do you understand the differentiation between the two?
I don't know.
It's more transparent doing this, though.
Yes.
Mark shaking his head.
It is, though.
No, I know.
If the budget were close to netting out at zero.
It will never, ever, 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 ever be close to netting out at zero.
Ever?
I would say a lot closer than it currently is.
Ever.
I will support this.
Okay, so that's unanimous? Mr. Chairman, $4,000 for town clerk wages?
And that, again, was to fund the difference between bringing a higher-paid staff person in, correct?
Correct.
Support.
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 And then $500 because of the had-dad Scrivener error.
See, this one, I don't know.
Can you repeat that?
The had-dad Scrivener error.
No, I'd like Mark to say.
Nope. You missed your opportunity.
What was the error?
I, enthusiastically support.
I'm going to write that, really support.
One.
Can't we transfer this out of town manager salary?
Yeah, five, his hourly rate was off by four or five cents, and it's $500. We're paying him at that rate.
As since last spring.
Since July 1st, yeah.
I see. I'll support.
Okay.
Can't we transfer this from town manager wages?
Yes, I guess you could.
I was just going to say that.
All right. But I'll support it out of, out of how it is.
Hey, Mark, for what it's worth, with all the work you do, the fact that you made this little error is a non-issue. It's all in good fun.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Uh, $90,000 transfer into Article four for the sewer commission to, uh, engineering for the Pepperell wastewater plant upgrade?
Support.
Why do we have a position on this when it doesn't really?
Because you're a selectman.
Wouldn't this make you?
Yeah, but it's ratepayers.
They're planning on going out to, they're planning on going out to bid this, this winter, so they need the money now. I don't know why it wasn't in the original budget in, in the spring, but this comes from sewer surplus revenue. Does not affect the tax rate.
I think the reason we are asked is just residents want to know how they should vote, and they look, I, I can remember as someone in the audience who has some amount of, you know, common sense, not much, looking up and seeing what the town, the selectmen said, and helping me to, to decide.
In the FinCon.
Yeah, and that may be a pathetic thing, but I can promise you that at least one other person in that audience does the same thing. They look to us for that guidance.
And, and many of them look for what to vote against, because we vote for it.
Yeah.
Indeed.
Fair enough.
Jack, you said you support?
I did.
Becky?
Support.
Support.
I support.
Support.
Mr. Chairman, $500,000 into the town's cap staff fund?
Support.
Support.
Again, that's the $490 we spent in the spring, plus $10,000 to bring us to 5%?
No, 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 this is the cap staff.
Oh, caps, so one and a half percent, so.
It's a little bit more, $70,000 more than one and a half percent.
Support.
Support.
I'm going to defer until, I had a conversation with Mark earlier, asking that a conversation take place with DOR to clarify whether they have different recommendations or standards for a town that is part of a regional school district as opposed to municipal, because those are different.
I understand what you're saying.
They would require different percentages, potentially of, of kind of savings, put away in different manners. So, I'll defer until I have a better understanding of their recommendations for regional, you know, school districts.
Stabilization, Article six.
$10,000, Mr. Chairman, to get us up to the 5% per, per the selectmen's financial guidelines.
Support.
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 Senior Senate Design, Article seven.
$225 and $175, around $400,000.
$225 from free cash, $175 from where, so if the public understands, please?
The receipts reserved for appropriation, the sale of the former fire station, and the sale of the Tarbell School.
Thank you.
So, that's money that's been kicking around a long time.
It's been sitting in the account for two, three years.
While we're talking about the Tarbell School, has the new owner of the Tarbell School ever answered what's going on with the development of the Tarbell School?
No, sir, and we've reached out to him several times. His permit will expire in November.
If you could get me his phone number, I'm going to reach out to him. Please, would you get that for me?
Has he pulled the permit? He's got to pull a building permit by November.
I, I can't answer your, the, I can't answer support or not support on this, I want to learn a little bit more, thanks.
So, you defer, Jack?
Yeah, when do you need this by, uh, support by?
Town meeting.
When do, when do we?
Oh, it goes to the printer next, wait, Tuesday.
Pardon me?
It goes to the printer next Tuesday.
Okay, thanks.
Do we think that by our meeting next week, we will have a specific number?
No, I mean, we're going to, we're going to review the, uh, we're going to review the, um, submittals on Wednesday, schedule interviews. I, I doubt I'll have that ready for you next Monday, Becky.
Have you, I'm sorry.
I guess so, I'll support.
Support.
Have you, the, the ones, you, you opened a bunch of RFPs, are they in line with this number?
We haven't, we have not talked price yet. We did not ask for price proposals that was to be negotiated. So, we have to pick a thing and then negotiate the price for town meeting. So, very quick.
So, the, the article, the, the RFPs you opened had no pricing in them?
No, the proposals for the work, to, how they would go about doing it.
You picked the quality of this, you picked the quality of the provider.
Then you negotiate price.
Say, I think these people can do a good job, then, you know.
Yep, that's how it works.
But they clearly have access to the fact that we've been discussing this $400 number all along.
Oh, well, then let's put it down at 300.
I mean, it does seem like they may have opened our stuff.
If the electorally willing to appropriate 300, then there's our negotiation, I mean?
Um, I'm going to change the town meeting.
Want me to defer this, actually?
Yeah, maybe it makes a little bit more sense.
Do we have a copy of the request for proposal that went out to get these?
Get it off the website, right? You don't put them on the website?
No, we don't, we take them off.
Let's get a copy of it to Allison.
How about getting a copy of it to all of us?
You know, I apologize, but is it possible to get an update from the committee that's managing all this, just to get a sense?
They were here.
They were here while you were gone.
They gave a very detailed explanation at the public hearing.
Did I like it?
I thought it was wonderful and well-presented.
You were a little wet and soggy at the time, but you liked it a lot.
Oh, my goodness.
Wow.
The FinCon beat the selectmen?
Like the jury comes back in and we reach?
So, um?
I'll try to watch the video, see if that helps.
So, uh, so we'll defer the RFP for the senior center to town meeting, and then I will get copies of the RFP that went out. You want the, what was sent to?
What was sent?
What was published, what, what they were supposed to respond?
Right.
Um, Article eight for the school cap staff, I'm recommending $500,000.
I'd like to hear what the FinCon has to say, since they're here, if you don't mind.
Uh, so, to fully disclose, we actually voted separately on the recommendation to create it and the recommendation to fund it. On the recommendation to create it, I believe it was 42, or 52? 52.
In favor?
In favor. Uh, on the recommendation to?
Reasons against being what?
Uh, the thinking of the two were that they, they, they think we could just put the money in our own capital stabilization rather than create a separate one. Uh, but they did support funding it, so in fact, the number was $500,000, and that was unanimous, including the two people.
Selectmen on Article eight?
I, I need, I'm sorry, I apologize, I need to wait till I get better numbers from the school committee.
Mark?
Jack? I do?
You do, I texted you today.
Oh, you're awesome.
Maybe we can solve this right now.
You mean email or text? I didn't get a text.
You said yes, I would, you wouldn't reply to that.
You guys are texting across the room.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I apologize, here. It, it does include the wiring barriers, so fi- $400,000, four to 500 is the right number. Thank you, I'm sorry, I apologize, you did, you did text me, and I said yes.
Okay, I just, I want this out there.
Sometimes numbers have logic behind them, believing them out, and they're not just picked out of the sky.
So, $500,000? Jack?
I support.
Support.
Support. Josh?
500.
What's the actual number in it? I'm kidding, I support.
It stays on September enrollment, so I'll.
I understand, I support, 500. Barry?
I'm trusting that the number is 500, not 600, so I support.
Allison?
Support.
$346,000 for the district wire? How did the FinCon? You said, you already said you supported this, right?
This was for the phone?
Phone and infrastructure.
You already did, yes.
Yes, I thought that's what you told us. Jack, support?
I support.
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 Um, Article 10, cyclical inspections, I'd ask you to defer that. I'll have a, I'll have a number for you after the bid opening on October 12th.
So, we, we actually did vote on it, um, we voted, uh, conditional support that with a number of not to exceed that number.
Okay.
If it exceeds that number, then clearly, please don't.
Nope, 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 nope.
I would prefer not to take the positions.
I, I'd wait until town meeting, I, I'd wait until October 12th.
Understood.
Uh, Complete Streets Engineering, $45,000. Jack?
Ooh, this is with the bump outs?
This is, no, 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 this is the, uh, additional sidewalk and, um, the flashing crosswalks.
Yeah, all right, because the description I read had said street crossings, so this does not include bump outs.
No, no bump outs.
Thank you very much.
So, support?
Fully support.
Becky?
Support.
Jack?
Support.
Support.
Uh, Finance Committee, the selectmen?
Can I just say one thing? I think it's unfortunate, originally, I think the Complete Streets recommendation included some access points to the rail trail, and it looks to me like those have fallen out of the plan, because we had to spend more money in other ways. Um, and it would be too bad if that happened, but I, I understand choices had to be made. I'm assuming this.
There'll be, there'll be other cycles, and we can keep going, so if that's, if that's a priority you'd like to put, I would recommend contemplating Complete Streets.
Well, I've heard from people, and, and I think it makes sense, there, it is hard.
Excuse me.
You know, like down by the Neshova Hospital, and also closer up in the center of town.
Understood. So, Article 12, offsetting the tax rate?
Vote as likely, just so you know, they voted unanimously?
We voted by a vote of four to one with an abstention to offset the tax rate by at least 100,000 votes.
Abstain?
Allison.
Allison.
I'm paying attention.
Obviously, the town manager is not, no kidding.
She's texting Marlena.
Um, Article 13, sale of 23 Station Avenue, to give the board an update, the Light Commission had a RFP opening last week. They received one proposal from Dan McElroy to convert that old garage into, um, a variety of uses. Uh, they will be, I have invited them to your meeting next week to come in and present, because they actually met tonight to decide whether or not they want to accept a proposal. They will come in and meet with you next week and fill you in, so I'd ask you to hold off on making that.
Do we know how much was offered?
I believe 200,000, but I could be wrong.
Who's coming?
The Light Commission. Just in case the Finance Committee is interested.
So, I would suggest.
You can let everybody in the Finance Committee know.
I'll do that.
I also think, Mark, it'd be important to speak with Allison and Becky on the board's prior thoughts about trying to do something down there, because there's a lot of history, right, in regard to that area, and our thoughts about managing that area that will go away if this gets sold. So, it'd be worth if the two of you got that background.
Yeah.
I was also, I was under the impression that the board sort of gave up its, its ability when we entered into the memorandum of understanding where they purchased land from us.
But they came back to the selectmen and asked for the opinion?
They did, they did come for the opinion, but that wasn't necessarily a binding, you know, reality of what GELD had to do.
No, there's nothing binding, but for instance, we had thought that we might make, uh, expand it and turn it into a road. We thought that we, it might be a park, we thought that a variety of things, and that our, our sort of agreements, formal or otherwise, with GELD might allow us to do that someday. If this gets sold, we'll not be able to do that. I'm not suggesting that, I'm not opposed to it at all, but we should know what the implications are of, of being supportive of this are. And I think Allison and Becky haven't had that background.
And, and that could also be given by Mark to Allison and Becky, or when the Elect, Light Commissioners come in to discuss this, we could expand the conversation to include previous discussions that the selectmen had and positions on that.
Right.
And I would suggest that you add that as part of the agenda, and we should have the discussion for full disclosure for us and for the public, so they understand exactly what they're voting on when we get to town meeting.
Agreed, but hearing about it for the first time at the meeting for Allison and Becky would not be a good idea, so.
That's why I said both. And you suggested it, I agree with you.
Mr. Chairman, Article 14 is to create the, um, Fort Carnes Sewer Enterprise Fund. I'd ask the board to take a position on that.
Support.
Support.
Are you sure we can't change the name?
All right, it's what I was just going to say, but I was just.
Well, if you don't, don't take your opportunity, then I'm going to take it for you.
It will take an article of town meeting to change the name, because town meeting voted to create the Fort Carnes Sewer District. That's what it's called, by town meeting vote.
All right, all right, I support that.
Support. Oh, yeah.
At town meeting.
Can you tell me what the, your concerns are, so I can understand what I should, am missing?
No.
You can't, or you won't?
I'm not trying, I will share them with you next week. Okay, because I may take a position. I, I have something I need to work out. All right?
Um, so then the enterprise budget for next year, Article 15? Jack?
Isn't that what we just voted?
No, you voted.
No, we voted.
No, no, no. Now you got to fund, one is to create a fund, the others to put money into it.
I'll wait for Mr. Deegan.
Fair enough.
Support.
Oh.
This is $13,000?
Yes.
Yeah, support.
Don't you dare.
At town meeting.
Funding to come from donation, right?
I'll, I'll support this, um, and, and to be clear, this is coming from money they've already been handed by a, someone who plans to connect.
Correct.
So, this is, they got kind of money in an account they need to put somewhere. Now, the question I had about this, um, at last year's, at the Springtown meeting, we voted a, some type of, um, grouping article that said we were allowed to just do these transfers within these funds, all, recurring every year. Do you recall that?
No, that's, you're talking about revolving funds.
Yes, this is.
This is an enterprise fund, totally different.
So, it's a different thing, thank you.
So, is, is it 401 on this one, too?
I don't know.
Support.
Yeah, it is now.
Yes. Article sixteen, amend the Community Preservation Committee bylaw?
So, I actually asked someone on the Community Preservation Committee to explain to me why they were proposing this, because it seems...
Thank you, Barry.
Seems like the original setup was that everyone would serve a three-year term, and they were staggered terms, so that they would rotate. What was explained to me was that the Planning Board asked that it be changed, because they do all of their assignments on a one-year-at-a-time basis. And then, Community Preservation Committee then polled everyone, Allison asked if they wanted to make any changes, and the Parks Commission apparently said yes. So, they're changing that Parks Commission and Planning Board would be only nominated for one-year terms. Seems still a little strange. I guess... I hope that someone on both the Community Preservation Committee and from the Planning Board will be willing to stand up and explain why they think that this is...
I would hope so.
I don't remember getting polled.
No, no, they asked the members...
Right, but we also appoint members of the CPC.
Well, that is a point.
And I don't remember getting a poll to say, "Hey, Board of Selectmen, would you like to change how long you appoint members of CPC?"
I received no such communication.
I received no communications out of this chair.
So, perhaps only two of the three entities were...
I think they were comfortable that the Selectmen... I think the statute, state statute, requires the Selectmen to appoint for three years.
So, there may be no choice for us.
So, do we appoint someone who's our representative?
You have two appointees to the commission... To the... Yeah, to the committee, rather. I believe your two appointees are...
Mike Roberts and Richard Hewitt.
Well, how can we have two?
You have two. There are seven members on the CPC.
Oh, I see.
So, any position the board want to take on this?
Support.
Well, this is a curious question. Why, since we were not asked, do you think that it's state...
I think the state law requires yours to be three-year terms.
Can you get clarification for that?
Yes, I'll clarify it.
So, I'll wait for the clarification.
I'm gonna defer. I'd like to know that answer, too.
I trust the people who are running the CPC, so I will support. They would have asked if they were allowed to.
So, two in favor. Jack and Barry in favor?
I'm gonna change my position on fourteen and fifteen and support both, only in so much as that I feel I'm gonna see a motion to amend the Fort Conus Sewer District at some point in the future, an article?
That's fine.
That doesn't... We might as well get this thing going, because it's there, and the money's there, so there's no reason to withhold it.
So, unanimous, unanimous. Jack and Barry in favor. Everyone else has deferred to town meeting on the Community Preservation?
Yes, sir.
The new anti-litter, snow, and public way bylaw?
Support.
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 We've kind of already voted on nineteen, haven't we?
Well, it's different.
Eighteen, do you support the town... You accepted the layout. Do you accept that it's now a public way?
I got you.
Jack?
Support.
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 And I would respectfully ask, after hearing from the lead citizen petitioner on this parcel, to wait until the 12th, I believe, of October on this, or even next week, because there's... It's as simple as this. Somebody else has entered into a purchase and sale of a property.
That's complicated.
It's as simple as that, okay? And if for some reason it falls apart, then this would move forward.
And if it does go back to line or stays on, it should clearly be numbered Article nineteen, not twenty.
Yes. Now, Mark, just clarify, so I can let Mr. Palmer know.
Oh, jeez, I missed that. Thank you for catching that, Becky.
Yeah, good point. He needs all ten signatories on that to withdraw.
The ten people that signed it need to sign it to take it off. Otherwise, it stays on, and then they just make a motion to withdraw at town meeting.
I'll explain that to him. So, we ask that we delay on this.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask the board to close the public hearing on the warrant.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Why does it say that it's given on our hands the second day of October?
Because you finalize the warrant next Monday.
Okay.
It goes to the printer on Tuesday.
All right.
All right, moving on with your town action.
Mr. Chairman, it's discussing...
Hold on one second. Public comment period. We are really out of orders here, so I'm sorry to the start. Any comments on the public? Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. Chairman, last week, you asked me to draft a policy on including articles submitted by the Regional School District Committees to automatically be on the town meeting warrant, so I tried to come up with a draft. It's on page... Page twenty-six. There's probably an easy way for me to get to page twenty-six.
You type twenty-six in the top?
Yes, I know, but I'm just... I know that. So, anyway, so what I did is I came up with a purpose and a scope, and I said the purpose is the way the Charter sets forth the procedure for initiation. And then I said that, you know, both the Regional School Committees for Groton, Dunceville, and the Shova Tech are not considered a multiple of the body for the purpose outlined in two-six, and inclusion of the articles submitted to them is not automatically included on the warrant. The Board of Selectmen have determined that a policy clarifying their position is warranted, and I came up with a policy that says you recognize the independent authority of the two school districts. During the time that the warrant is open, articles for inclusion for both shall have the ability to submit warrant articles, money or otherwise, for consideration by town meeting, and that the board shall automatically place them on the warrant. I thought I did a hell of a job drafting this policy.
Give me a mark.
I'd ask the board to adopt the policy.
Everybody understands the reason we're doing this is the interpretation and the wording of the Charter, and until the Charter changes, we'll come forward again, which still haven't even been approved yet.
Nope. We haven't even had a hearing called yet.
Yeah, so bottom line is, is that this is a policy to take into consideration the needs of both districts.
Make a motion that we approve the policy as drafted?
I second the motion.
So, my only slight hesitation here is that we did have... The school district's attorney had a different opinion, and we are basically...
Agreeing with our council.
We are agreeing with our town council's opinion and not acknowledging that there might be a difference of opinion in the background information.
We're making the disagreement moot.
Yeah, correct.
We're nullifying the argument. We're saying the disagreement doesn't...
I understand that we're taking absolutely the right step on the policies. Just putting that in writing seems a little bit provocative unnecessarily, but I'm okay. I'll support.
So, you're gonna be provocative. I support.
Support.
Mr. Chairman, I have one small addition.
Oh, we have to vote. This is a motion.
I made a motion, but you guys all supported it. I guess it's all the same.
That's right. We're off the warrant. We have to vote.
There you go.
Warrant unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I have one last addition. The Greenway Committee notified me after the agenda was posted that they're recommending I appoint Carol Greenfield to become a member of the Groton-Greenway Committee. There was a vacancy. I haven't made that appointment. I'll ask the Selectmen to please consider ratifying that appointment tonight.
Motion. And what does the Greenway Committee do?
They oversee our Greenways.
And wow. A equals A.
They work in conjunction, you know, like the National Uva watershed. They make recommendations to that. They look at the other waterways in town, Squanacook, Nashua, Lost Lake.
So, Greenway is same as a waterway?
Well, the Greenway... The Greenways is the side of the waterways.
The banks.